We're going to, uh, call our meeting to order. First item is invocation by Pastor, uh, or Chaplain Jerry Ferguson, Prescott Valley Police Department. Pledge of allegiance will be led by Doug Kelly.
Let's pray. The Psalmist said, "Bless the Lord, oh my soul." We thank you, Lord, that we don't have to ask for your presence. We acknowledge your presence. Thank you for the wisdom you give us, the strength you give us. Thank you, Father, for the purpose of our gathering here tonight. We pray for each of our council members, each of our volunteers of the town, all of the employees of the town, but we thank you for the businesses and the residents of our town. We are grateful for a community that bands together, not in an "us them," but a "we." We thank you, Lord, that we are a team working together for the well-being of all of us. I ask that you would give wisdom tonight to each of the decisions that need to be made. Help us to understand not just for the immediate, but for the consequences of the decisions that we're making. May we know that what we're doing tonight will have a long-term beneficial effect on our community. We'll give you praise and thanksgiving for the redeeming effort you give to us, and we thank you. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain, and thank you, Doug. Okay, next item is roll call. Diane?
Mayor Skook?
Present.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
All present and accounted for.
Thank you. Councilmember Rooney?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
And Councilmember Mallory is absent this evening. We do have a quorum. Mayor?
Thank you, Diane. Okay, next item, scheduled announcements and presentations. We'll start with Chamber of Commerce. Brady, you're up.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Town Council. I'm Brady from the Chamber of Commerce. We are rapidly growing here in Prescott Valley. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce some of our newest members and businesses in Prescott Valley. First, I'm going to introduce Brenda and Clayton Heath with Bear Creek Real Estate and Property Management.
Hi, councilmembers, how are you?
Very good.
I'm short. My name is Brenda Heath. I'm the owner and the broker and the property manager at Bear Creek Real Estate and Property Management.
Gee, thanks.
I was born and raised in Prescott, Arizona. I've been a true Prescottonian for 57 years. I love it here. My parents were in real estate, and I told myself it's something I would never, ever do. I said, "Absolutely not." My dad was a landlord. I started cleaning rentals when I was about seven years old, and I said I'd never do it, and here I am. We've been in business for about two years. We have about 724 doors. We manage all of the Quad City area, including the Phoenix area. We just expanded into Phoenix, and we are doing some apartment complexes there. We are a referral-based business, which means that 98% of our business comes from owner referrals. So, the people that we manage for refer us to other owners. So, I'm extremely proud that that is how we've built our business in the two years that we've been in business. My husband Clayton, I'd like to introduce him. He's a co-owner, but I'm still his boss. Now, make that really clear.
Oh, yeah.
We understand that.
Clayton is actually a Prescott Police Sergeant who will be retiring after 30 years on April 27th. And he is a licensed Realtor, and he will be coming in to give me a break. Because I, being in real estate and property management, it's a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week job, and you don't get time off. So, as soon as he retires from the Prescott Police Department, he will be a property manager and property contractor.
Cool.
And thank you for allowing me at your meeting.
Well, congratulations, Br-
Thank you.
Any comments? No? Yeah, you.
She's in charge.
So, next up, we have, um, you can smell it's lunchtime at the crossroads now because of this new business. We have Sarah Rodriguez with the new Chick-fil-A.
Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for letting me be here with you this evening. To tell you a little bit about myself, I've been with Chick-fil-A for about nine years. My dad lives in a franchisee in Albuquerque, New Mexico, so that's where I've been living for the last nine years. Didn't plan on going into the chicken business, kind of like you, didn't plan on following in the family business, but absolutely fell in love with the business and decided to go for my own franchise. The plan originally was to stay in New Mexico, close to family, but my husband and I visited some different places. We came to Prescott Valley, and the first moment we got here, we knew this is where we wanted to live. We absolutely fell in love with it. Our families agreed, even though it would be nicer for us to be closer to them. This was the community that we wanted to be in. We thought this would be a great place to raise a family. Couple months later, I found out I was actually pregnant when I visited here, so the whole family aspect was coming a lot sooner. So, we moved here in October. I had the baby in November, and we opened in January. So, we have absolutely loved Prescott Valley. We've had a great reception. My son spends plenty of time in the restaurant, but he, I'm proud to say, he was born here, so he is a local to Prescott Valley, and so that just so much more endears us to this community. And I just can't say enough about it. Everyone who asks me, who was in my Chick-fil-A fundamentals class, the class to become an operator, they say, "You know, what do you, what do you think about it?" And I say, "I feel like I'm in the promised land. I love it here." So, thank you for letting us be a part, and I want to say, too, I get compliments all the time about our team. I've hired roughly about 93 from Prescott, Prescott Valley, Chino and Dewey, and I get compliments all the time about our people. And what I want to say is, they're your people. You know, I didn't bring them in. These are locals, and so y'all have done a fantastic job with the community, and I'm just really thankful to be a part of it. So, thank you for letting me be here this evening.
Well, thank you, and congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, Jody, you got a comment?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Sarah, I'm going to add to those compliments, because my family was over at your business this week, and a couple of your wonderful employees, Joe and John, were out in the dining room and just, you know, so gracious, so welcoming, great smiles, but that's indicative of the leadership that you're bringing as well. We're very pleased that you're here with your husband and your little one. It's wonderful. And then also for Clayton and Brenda, we're very pleased that you're here with us as well. Thank you.
Good. Anything else, Brady, or anyone else? Use the microphone, would you?
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you, Brady. Next, is Rodney Jenkins here? I don't see him. Uh, we missed him. We'll have to come back to that if he comes.
Mr. Mayor, Council, if I may, my name is Richard Hernandez. I'm a direct report of Rodney's. I was to meet him here. He has the presentation. I don't know if you have a copy?
No.
No. But we could come back to that when Rodney shows up, if you would prefer, Richard.
Since I have nothing to offer, yes, that would be good.
Hey, thanks for doing it, though. Okay, we have, uh, number six. Comments, communications. One very special event. Can you believe it? Prescott Valley Civic Center Mortgage Shredding Ceremony. And what we're going to do is all the council will go down, and we each have a copy of it. And guess what we're going to do? We're going to put it through the shredder. We, uh, because of our, our smoke alarm, we, we can't have a mortgage burning.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, this evening, you have a couple of documents, uh, there, and typically, when you pay off your mortgage, you go ahead and you have a mortgage burning party. The fire department has no sense of humor about starting fires in this room, so going ahead and believing that it would be wiser to shred, uh, documents, it's probably important to go ahead and, um, ask Ivan Legler if he thought he'd still be an employee of the town when we ended up, uh, selling the bonds for the Prescott Valley Civic Center in 1997. He was here, believe it or not, and worked on that document along with our bond attorneys, and that was for roughly $13 million for the Civic Center. Since that time, we also had added in, as part of refinancing, the police station. And both of those are now history, paid off, and it is time to go ahead and burn those mortgages. Now, the third item, uh, is of particular importance to the history of the town of Prescott Valley. Mayor, you may remember, or certainly those that came before, in 1980, directed the mayor and council to begin negotiations for the purchase of the water company that served Prescott Valley. That was Shamrock Water Company. Now, let me say that again. That's 1980. It took until 1999 to close the deal. Do the math. That's 19 years it took to negotiate the, the purchase of Shamrock Water and turn that into what has evolved to be the Prescott Valley Water Department, but the first step was forming the Prescott Valley Water District. We spent $22 million on that. 15 for the purchase, and Mayor, you will recall that, um, when we purchased Shamrock Water, we had to do some emergency improvements so that we did not go ahead and have any failure of the system, which we had been experiencing every June for several years prior to our purchase of, of the system. So, we spent $15 million buying a water company, and I think Ivan would concur, that's the cheapest water we will ever purchase for the town of Prescott Valley. But today, the Prescott Valley Water Company serves, uh, over 20,000 individual customers. Customers meaning meters, which in turn is roughly 45,000 individuals within the annexed boundaries of Prescott Valley. So, it, uh, the water company has grown, but guess what? We paid it off as well. So, there's your shredder.
Okay. Ivan, you got any comments in your defense or behalf?
You know, I never knew Larry was so old.
Speak for yourself, Ivan. We'll go down and shred our documents here.
I'll follow you. Doesn't seem like it was that long ago. Not even close. And I hope it's turned on.
You are, you're the next team, Mayor.
You're going to be the guinea pig, see if it's plugged in.
Going, but that's only one sheet. We have about seven sheets here, I believe. Laura, you, uh, are next. Don't get your finger in there, Laura. Jody?
That's why Marty wore a bowtie.
Yeah.
Wise decision, Marty.
As far as I can remember, I think Ivan and Larry were here then. I was, Diane wasn't. I don't think any of the others were involved.
Richard, Richard was.
Richard, where's Richard at? Oh, there he is. Yeah, he was here. Richard, uh, of course, he's been here a long time. Anyway, thank you so much. I'm glad to see that one go down the shredder. Debt is paid off. The building is ours. Vice Mayor, any comments?
Let's get to work.
Okay, we'll go to work. Now, we're going to go back on one item. You have a Pike College update, Mr. Rodney Jenkins? Can you believe you weren't here when we had the agenda item come up? Yeah, she's wearing, he says, he's a college president, it works him too hard.
Oh, thank you.
Now, that couldn't be true. You're up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, councilmembers, I want to, uh, first of all, thank you, I'm literally running from one side of the county to the other. It's always a fun trip going around the mountain. I'm still trying to figure out how I can go through the mountain. Maybe Larry can, can work together with his other colleagues and, and, and do that. I gave you a, a folder with several things in it. I want to, I want you to turn your attention to the Prescott Valley 40 Phase 2. As you know, we have a, our Allied Health Center right down the street in Prescott Valley, and, uh, recently, we have been engaged in the second phase of the building project. The second phase is the second floor of the building, um, and beginning July 1st, we will begin a probably four-to-five-month process to complete the second floor. We're doing two things on this, in, in this process. We are moving NARDA from the, uh, center here in PV to our main campus. We have to build, uh, another structure, and, and NARDA needed housing, they needed food service, and we, we certainly couldn't accommodate them, um, in Prescott Valley. We're moving them to the Prescott campus where we had ample space for their offices, training, and we're building a shed for their, um, assimilated shooting range, or whatever they, they, they call it. We didn't really want them shooting up and down the street in Prescott Valley. That's not, uh, too safe. But the, the first floor, we're also moving in where NARDA was and where they were doing their training, we're going to turn that into our Student Services Center. So, prospective students, as well as current students, can come up and have, uh, continuous support from our Student Services Division. We're taking the NARDA section where they have their offices and turning that into more classroom space. On the second floor, we are moving our Regional and Economic Development Department, which Richard is the executive director of, into those spaces. And so, we believe that it, it makes sense, uh, to relocate the regional economic development in our small business development centers to PV for two primary reasons. One, it puts the staff more strategically closer to the east side of the county, so we can move our people around a little bit easier. The other thing, we see a tremendous amount of growth in, in Prescott Valley. There is a growing need for the business support services. Richard and his staff do actually more work in Prescott Valley than any other community on the west side of the county. So, it just made sense for us to move the offices and the staff to Prescott Valley and allow them to continue to do the work that they have really done, um, so, so well. So, we're going to, what you're looking at is some, some possible, uh, designs for the new student center. We are finalizing the design stage within the next few months, and we want to be ready to go and complete it by, uh, our Christmas break on this project. So, um, we're very excited, especially to have RADC down in, in what we clearly know is our fastest-growing community, um, and they will be able to continue to provide the services to our businesses. The other documents in here just really talks about what Yalapai College is, is all about. Since, uh, Dr. Wills has been on board and, and more recently, um, we've really engaged more and more our communities. We have become much more proactive in our approach to reaching out to our communities. We want to be at the table with, uh, economic development issues, helping with workforce, um, helping strengthen our business community. We also are talking directly to organizations to make sure that we have the right training courses in place to clearly make our workforce some of the best in the country. So, our goal is to, to, to really be at the table to help the county become a better place to live, work, and raise a family. With, with that, I'll answer any questions. Mr. Mayor?
Questions, anyone? Vic? No? Laura?
I don't have any questions. I'm just excited. I call it the Center for Medical Excellence, and I know that that's what you're going to produce, and I want to thank you for centering, uh, in particular, the nursing studies here. I know a lot of the nurses travel from here all the way over to Cottonwood. They're going to be happier than I am. So, thank you so much.
It's a growing, our, our, um, medical programs are, are growing. The other advantage is that we have more scholarship money than students right now. So, our donors are stepping up and providing support for the, our education of our students. So, that's very, very important. That doesn't mean, if you guys want to give, Larry, we won't take your check, but it's, it's really nice to know that, um, we're really looking at other ways of, of talking to prospective students and letting them know, you can go to college, at least you're, you're a community college for almost free.
Any other comments? Jody?
Rodney, thank you for coming tonight, both of you. Appreciate it. So, for those that are here in our audience for council and also viewing on television, if they were interested in this money that's available, who do they need to get a hold of, Rodney?
Our Student Services Department, of course, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but our website, our Student Services, if, in, based upon your major, um, there, there is money available. And, and also, I, I do also want to point out, we have training programs that are directly linked to companies now. I'm sure you've heard about the RESA moved into Prescott. Well, we have a bit of a problem with this, because the owner of RESA has just signed a couple more contracts for more of his machines, and now we need to increase the number of students in our training courses to increase the number of people out producing, selling, and marketing his machines. Good problem a half, because these are $25-an-hour jobs. We filled up our first cohort of 30. We've, and, and that, those guys are getting ready to finish. We have another cohort going to start in a few weeks. We have a full cohort, cohort of students there as well, so we need to increase, and we're going to have some internal discussions about how we can increase our numbers immediately, because this company needs us right away. And it's a, this is a phenomenal story, not just for Prescott, but the entire region, because all of our employers, if you're underemployed or unemployed, we'll teach you how to run the machines. And, and, and it's during the training process, it's a $15-an-hour internship, and then, once you graduate, it's $25-an-hour, at least $25-an-hour a job. So, and it, it was really, uh, our president, myself, Vice President, and Richard's, uh, group who made this deal happen over the Christmas holiday. I mean, we really worked through, and, and I've been involved in higher education for a long time, and I just, I've never seen an organization, institution of higher education move so fast. This is a three-to-five-year process, but just to say that we are out here trying to do those types of deals for both our east and west county residents.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, you can, you can get in.
What is, what is RESA, and what kind of machines are they?
RESA, R E S A, is, it, they're, Richard, come on. They're CAD machines that, that, you, you, thank you, Richard.
It's Resaware, uh, we shortened it to RESA, resaware.com. They have a pop-up business model where they take these kiosks, they're about my height and four feet wide, inside the steel kiosk, which is forkliftable and goes inside the belly of an airplane, and they fly all over the world, actually, is a bank of six 3D printers that are, he has a patent for the, the head and the printer. It's liquid nitrogen cooled, so these six printers print 3D orthotic insoles, much like you go to your doctor and they charge you lots of money for them. The concept is you go into a place like Costco where the, where the kiosk is up front, just stand on this, feels like Jell-O to me, but it's, it's a laser imaging, um, input, measures the bottom of your foot. You put all your information in, you go shopping at Costco, fill your basket up. By the time you get through that real long line, on your way out, you pick up your 3D orthotics, and you go home.
Thank you.
That, that's awesome. Having purchased orthotics in the past, I know what they could cost, and, yeah, I guess, I guess the 200, yeah, I paid over 500 for mine when I needed them, so.
It's about 150.
Okay. That's, I, that, I think that's, that's a great program, so thank you for explaining it.
Yeah, thanks, Richard.
Yeah, you answered one of my questions, and I think I've seen somebody in Costco, it was probably about six or eight months ago, yeah, that they, they were up and running. I don't know, I don't think they're there right now, but it's probably more a trial type of thing, but.
Yeah, they're, he, the owner was moving, showcasing the machine.
Yeah.
And so, he was moving it around, but, but, and, and that's why the need for the, the increased production. Uh, he recently signed a deal with Macy's. He's got Walmart, Costco, and, and, and I shouldn't say Sam's Club too loud around here, but. And, and Sam's Club. So, so he's signed, he needs five, 600 machines like yesterday, and, and, and we, the company is leasing space in our C-Tech, uh, building, and, and so they're able to produce, but not producing fast enough.
Has NARDA already vacated? Have they made their changes?
No, they have not.
All right.
No, they have not.
When will that happen?
We're, we're hoping by the end of the year, we can have them in their new space. We have to move, because they're going into the offices of our Regional and Economic Development, uh, in Building 29 on our campus. So, we're hoping by mid-December, we can begin that move, and then we have to build that separate, uh, shooting, indoor shooting range, uh, structure. So, that will start July 1st.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Good job.
Mayor, thank you.
We really appreciate that. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, uh, we do, might have some more comments. You got some more, Marty?
Yeah, uh, last week was Read Across America Week. For those of you that are not familiar, March 2nd is Dr. Seuss's birthday, so all the schools around the country, this isn't a local event, all the schools around the country designate that week as Read Across America. I was fortunate enough to read in three different schools. I read to, uh, Lake Valley on, uh, Wednesday, where I read to second and third graders, and Friday, I read at Coyote Springs and Mountain View Schools, where I read to kindergartens and first graders. What an experience reading to the kindergarten kids. I said it the other night at the school board meeting, that, uh, anybody who teaches kindergarten deserves much more than anything we could give them. I mean, the amount of energy in that classroom was, was amazing. Now, the other thing you need to know is, when I go, I get dressed as Cat in the Hat. I wish I would have given Mark some, uh, uh, some pictures so he could put it up on the screen, but, yeah, I get the full costume of Cat in the Hat, and it, it's a lot of fun to the kids, and my reward for all of it is, at the end, all the kids want to come up and hug me, so that, that's great. So, it was, it was a lot of fun. If anybody gets an opportunity to do it next year, definitely say yes. It's, it's definitely worth it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Anyone else? Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick reminder to those who are watching as well, family event coming up is the Extravag- Extravaganza here, adjacent to the library on the green. We'll be having the, all the eggs out along, beautiful colored eggs. It's a family event, the Family Arts Festival. That's on the 24th, which is a Saturday of March in the morning. This is one of the events to be at. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Any other comments? If not, we'll go on to the consent agenda this time. Would you read it, Laura?
I would, Mr. Mayor. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. A, approving the February 1st and 15th work study, February 8th and 27th, 2018 council minutes. B, approving the February 4th, 2018 Board and Commission Selection Committee minutes. C, approving a special event license for the guests at the, at Mom's 90th birthday party. D, approving a contract with Tomar Elevator Components, Inc. for the Civic Center Elevators Rehab Project, CIP at 411, in the amount of $26,008. And E, is accounts payable.
Good. Anyone want to pull an item, or do you want to prove it as a whole?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to
Think we're ready?
Approve all items listed on the consent agenda.
Second, anyone?
I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote? Diane?
Yes. Approved. It's approved unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we'll move on to number eight, Old Business for Action. Second reading of ordinance number 840, approving the zoning map change, ZMC 15-005. And with that, I would ask Town Clerk to read ordinance number 840 by title only for the second reading. Diane?
Ordinance number 840, an ordinance of the Mayor and the Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a Municipal Corporation of Arizona, amending town zoning map, ZMC 15-005, by changing the zoning classification of an approximately 210 and 8/10 acres from C2 pad, which is commercial, general sales and services planned area development, M1 Industrial General Limited, and R1 MH-10 residential, single-family, mobile manufactured homes, to PL, public lands, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days and after its passage and approval according to law.
Okay. Any, are there any comments before we vote on that? Richard, did you have anything to add? Okay. Anybody care to make a motion?
You don't need a motion, Mayor. We just need to vote.
Okay. Okay, shall the ordinance pass? Is it to vote? We got it.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Okay. It's been read, so we don't need to do that. Okay, we'll go on then to number B here. Second reading of ordinance number 841, approving ZOA 17-003, microbreweries and craft distilleries and zoning amendment.
The second reading.
Richard, do you have any comments on that? No? With that, I would ask Diane to read ordinance number 841 by title only for a second reading.
Ordinance number 841, an ordinance of the Mayor and the Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a Municipal Corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference a document entitled Amendments to Chapter 13, Microbreweries and Craft Distillers, declared by Resolution Number 2039 to be a public record, which amends Chapter 13 of the Town Code to permit the use of microbreweries and craft distillers in the C2 Commercial General Sales and Services Use District subject to a use permit, and in the C3 Commercial Minor Industrial Use District as a matter of right, providing that all other articles and sections and subsections of the Town Code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision, excuse me, provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected, but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. With that, shall the ordinance pass? You want to set the vote?
That too passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, now, we'll go on to number C, or rather, number nine for New Business, consideration of appointing Robert Wertz to Arts and Cultures Commission. Rick, you want to, any comments?
I'd be happy to. Mr. Wertz, would you like to come down, please? One position on the Library Board of Trustees became open when Gary Clemmons resigned at the end of the term effective June 30th, 2017. Mr. Clemmons was appointed, first appointed to the, we've got two conflicting things here, the Arts and Culture Commission. Okay. The vacancy was advertised and one application was received. Myself and Councilman Grossman conducted the interview and are recommending the appointment of Robert Wertz to fill the vacancy made by Gary Clemmons' departure with a renewal, with the term renewal date of June 30th, 2020.
Mr. Wertz, you want to introduce yourself?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you today. My wife, Julie Smith, and I moved to Prescott recently and touring the library, and I saw advertisement for the Arts and Culture Meeting. Curious what was happening, came. Toward the end of the meeting, there was an invitation to the public to consider applying for the commission as there were vacancies. And so, I did so, and was presented with the opportunity to interview for the position, and was recommended for the position, which I greatly appreciate. I have over 30 years of experience in the arts, formally trained as an artist, yet I also worked in the public sector with the Department of Public Works with the County of San Diego. And so, there's a range of opportunity I have that I believe I can apply to the programs and services that this commission provides. So, one of those is the space of the activity of fundraising. So, as I mentioned to Councilmember Anderson and Grossman, I have experience in that area. I've already identified several grants that the existing programming would be eligible for, as well as potential programming. I've spoken with Director Witty about this, and we will discuss these further upon your approval. Also, I'd like to extend an invitation to the council member and the general public to attend the first annual arts exhibition at the Stone Ridge Community Center. I'm a resident of Stone Ridge, and this opportunity will be presented on the 17th and 18th of this month. So, I'm very aware of the need for funding for programs such as this, and so, I've been involved with a range of fundraising activities in the past with nonprofit organizations such as National Multiple Sclerosis Society, for example. And it's, it's always a challenge when you go to people that have been approached before for money. And I realize that the best way, that one of the best ways that you can demonstrate your sincerity is to do what you're asking people to do. If you're asking them to write a check, if you can contribute, then you're stepping up to the plate as well. So, I will be donating a sculptural vessel that I made several years ago that will be offered as a silent auction item at this upcoming exhibition. So, at the very least, we're going to have $100. At the best, it'll be at least $500 or $600, which I will be donating all the proceeds for this, this program.
Any questions, comments? Laura?
I wonder whether you missed words. I'm a former Arts and Culture Commission member, and I served on that committee, and unfortunately had to be absent, but it's very obvious to me why they brought you forward for the vote. And if you haven't already, and I want to share this with the broad citizens here, gone over to our Civic Center building, this is Youth Arts Month, and there's art on all of the floors over there. And I took about an hour and a half today to check it all out because I look forward to it every year. You're contributing to that and supporting that, and we love showcasing our children in our community. So, welcome. I will, I will be excited to vote for you.
Good, thank you. Marty?
Yeah, real quick, I just want to, I mean, based on what Mr. Wertz has already said, you could understand why we chose him. It was a very pleasant conversation and an easy choice. So, thank you and welcome, and congratulations, and we look forward to seeing you for other things. And if no one else has any questions, I'd love to make a motion.
Do you have a comment?
No.
I think we're ready.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robert Wertz to the Arts and Culture Commission to a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2020.
And I'm decided to second that.
Another big test, Mr. Wertz. Diane, will you set the vote?
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Congratulations, and thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Thank you and welcome.
Okay. Now, we'll go on to number nine, B. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents, accepting a Library Services Technology Act, LSTA grant of $4,285.71, to purchase the Wi-Fi hotspots for the library circulation division. Casey, you got any comments? You'll have to use the microphone.
Nice, nice try.
Yeah, nice try.
That was a good try.
The people at home can't hear you, Casey.
Okay. No, we're very excited that we received this grant. Michelle and I wrote that, when did we write it?
Couple months.
Couple months ago. So, it's a great opportunity to give those in our community a chance to, who don't have reliable Wi-Fi or internet services at all, to have access to internet for free. So, we're just really happy that we received this grant.
Good. Any other comments, questions? Your comments?
No comments.
Oh, you have to use a microphone.
No comments.
Okay. Good.
Are you ready for a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I think we are ready.
All right. I'd like to make that motion. Motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, Vice Mayor, to sign the necessary documents for the grant of $4,285.71 to purchase Wi-Fi hotspots for library circulation by electronic phone.
Second, anyone?
I'll second that, Mayor.
With a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane? Casey, good job.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Mayor, thank you. That, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
It passes. Good, thank you. Okay, we'll have the comments from the public. Marty, you want to read that one?
Sure. Comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda.
Okay, this is your chance. Anyone care to make any comments? Come on up. Welcome. Good to see you.
Good evening. My name is Gene Cordy, and I'm here to commend the Town of Prescott Valley in successfully maintaining the cleanliness of the town by keeping the highways and streets free of litter. However, in my opinion, one area requires additional attention, that being the subject of roadside memorials. One case in point is the memorial located on the corner of Windsong in Highway 69 near Denny's Restaurant. If it pleases the council, I have a picture of that memorial. Shall I bring it forward, or does everyone, is everyone aware of this?
Every, I think we're aware of that.
Probably acutely aware of it. My wife and I have lived here for three and a half years and have witnessed items added to the memorial, such as teddy bears, dolls, and other toys. These items are subjected to the ravages of weather, and have become an eyesore in the community, and may be a health hazard as the items rot and could house vermin. It is on public record that the Town of Prescott Valley is responsible for the maintenance of the easement located at Denny's. I would like to propose an ordinance or policy to limit the size and allowable items to be presented to the public at this and other memorials. How this ordinance or policy is enacted and enforced would, of course, be up to the Town Council.
Okay, we can refer that to Larry for further study.
This particular site is on the A.DOT right of way.
Sir, I've confirmed with
I encourage you to, give me a holler, let me give you my card, and we can come in and talk about it. But, I believe the location of this particular site is not on the town, but we'll explore that.
Okay, yeah, I talked with A.DOT. A.DOT sent me to the town. The town went back, and then, A.DOT said it's a matter of public record that that easement is part of, that easement is part of the responsibility of the Town of Prescott Valley. So, I guess, in this particular case, as it is a matter of public record, and maybe that is up to discussion or what have you, maybe it should be made clear that who really is in charge of that area and what, who has responsibility for that, because frankly, it's a black eye for our community. I think it's getting pretty ugly while remaining sensitive to the idea of roadside memorials. I'm certainly not going to condemn a roadside memorial for sensitive reasons, obviously, but as it becomes a, for want of a better term, a trash heap, something, I believe, should be done, and be it the Town of Prescott Valley, or if they defer to A.DOT, so be it. But, Mr. Legler, I'll give you a holler. Oh. To whom do I address this?
I gave the card.
Who would you like to be tonight?
Okay, I gave you my card. The phone number's on there. Please, please give me a call.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Cordy. We appreciate that. Good comment.
Mrs. Vice Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? If not, we have one other item to take care of, and it's called adjournment. Anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, Mayor.
You have the motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane? Thank you all. Thank you all for coming, by the way. That's...
That's unanimous, Mayor.
It passes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.